Good morning. We call this order for our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting on this Tuesday, July 19, 2016, and ask if everybody please join the board as we honor America with Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first item on our agenda is always, public comment number one, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address topics on today's agenda. I do have two requests, both regarding the easement across the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail. If the two of you are okay with that, I'd ask that you just speak to us when we get to that point in the agenda. If there's anybody else who'd like to address something, any topic on today's agenda, now's the time. Seeing no one moving to the microphone, we'll move on to departmental reports. We've got community services quarterly report. Carla, when? Carla, all these people came just to see you.
I'm sure there's something else they'd like to talk about. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll start talking about our general assistance program. We have the numbers there. For single household cases, we assisted 27 individuals and we're looking at this area from April 2016 to June 2016. And we assisted 16 families for a total of 43 for the quarter. And we have our year-to-date numbers there. For denials, we had 215 individuals that we were unable to assist that we referred out to other agencies. And we had eight individuals that applied but did not return for whatever reason. You have the figures there as far as how much assistance was provided. For rent, $13,845.64. Utilities was $564.10. And then transportation burial was the $6,441. I did include in the report the information regarding the Crestview mobile home relocation assistance. Today, we had assisted three individuals or three families for the $2,403.50.
Do we have anything pending? Do we have people who have come in for an initial visit who haven't come back?
Yes. I believe it's around six or seven pending applications right now. That's what we're seeing. Asset, we did, the asset administrative team worked to update the policies and procedures as well as the 20-year agreement, which I think you guys already identified as part of you guys already. For the region, I did a lot of work on contracting, but as I said, we'll have about 50 entities that we've contracted with. The employment committee, I have information there about that committee that was appointed by the governing board. It consists of three governing board members as well as three administrative team members. And we're looking at trying to see if there's a way to standardize policies for staff who are, their salaries are funded by the region, as well as we'll be taking a look at salaries and is there a way to try and standardize that.
How many employees do we have fully funded by the region?
I believe there are five individuals within our office that we have statement of understanding for. And it may be that it's a portion of their salary that's funded by the region.
Right.
Two that are fully.
Two that are fully funded and three others that...
Yep, yep. We have spent some time through the quarter meeting with the sheriff's office as well as with OptiMe, like services, talking about the general diversion service that OptiMe provides, as well as the service coordination position that is going to be provided through our office. As you're aware, we had hired for that service coordinator and she ended up resigning at the end of June. So we are, we've posted for that position. It closed on Friday, last Friday. It's we're in the process of identifying those candidates that we're looking to use with.
One caller's trying to mark just a minute. As you are aware, NACO, the National Association Counties, has the stepping up program that Story County has acknowledged. And I have been serving as some of the representative amongst those Iowa counties. Blacklock County has kind of taken the lead in this particular area. We've only had one, you know, meeting to kind of find out what these counties are doing. Would it be appropriate for me to put you or someone as another contact person so that if there is other additional information that's coming down the pipe that we could help kind of coordinate? I know that, you know, while next week when I'm at the national conference, I will be meeting with them and I imagine I'll hear more about what's happening there from the NACO perspective, but I want to make sure that we had enough other bodies to stay on top of some of the things that are coming down, particularly if there could be some possible grant dollars or other funding things that would help us do more of an outreach.
Yeah, definitely. And I believe I have given my contact information. I don't remember the lady's name in Washington that originally, there was that conference call. And I participated in that as well as the service coordinator that we hired. So I think she has my information, but if you want to make sure that...
Well, I guess I'm thinking more or less from the Iowa group, Coalition in Iowa, the various counties that are involved. And we're reaching out. And so if we do have other meetings, we want to make sure we bring the necessary representatives from the number of counties, if they can give us additional updates in terms of what's happening at the county level.
Sounds good. Thank you. We do have a service coordinator in our office who's been participating in organizing the mental health fair that's going to be taking place in September. That's been, I think, a really nice collaboration with several mental health agencies to get that organized mentally. It will be held on September 13 on the campus of Iowa State. If a speaker aren't enough to come and talk, we'll have different vendors come out there. Looking forward to that. The region is sponsoring a training coming up on September 15 and 16 called Five Star Quality Measures and Outcomes Defining Area Differences. We are opening that up to all providers, interested individuals within the region, as well as part of Iowa region who's coming together to offer that. Looking forward to that. Also, I worked, when the fire had occurred in Ames at the 301 South Ford Street, I worked with IRE-Levale who have available therapy services should anybody have a prior need for that. I did check in recently to IRE-Levale, it wasn't a request for that service, but it was available should anybody need it. And then something new too that we're getting into here is we had an administrative team member, Patty Triblee, she was trained to be able to offer trauma-informed care. And we're setting up some local trainings within for our regional staff to contribute to country and that, as well as I think she's going to open that up to provide. And our general assistance for the community services office, we did participate in the May 10 informational meeting that was held for Crestview residents. And then after that, that meeting is when we started to take applications for assistance. We continue to work on that.
Thank you.
One before you, I knew that Erin, you mentioned earlier on contracts, we have about 50 entities. Not that I'm one of the point favorites, but in the collaboration with the community service groups, are you hearing anything regarding delay in payments and things like that now that the managed care programs are basically up and running? I'm hearing from other supervisors in their areas that this is continuing to be an ongoing concern. And yet, historically, we know that payments sometimes lag anywhere between 30, 60, and 90 days out. But in this case, are you hearing anything that's out of the norm?
We are hearing that from various providers. Dead Childs right now organized a meeting for providers to come together and talk about managed care and just what's working, what's not working. And one of the things I think that's carrying through is difficulties with the billing. And Erin could maybe speak to that a little bit as far, she does the case management billing for a case management program. Yeah, it's something that we're hearing from various places. I think providers have had to increase their staff to be able to just work through the billing process and do the reconciliation.
That's really been a common thing. I was at the meeting the last time. And it's the administrative time that takes just even call to get prior authorizations or even once they've been denied billing to figure out, you know, what the problem is and how they're, how they're, it's taking. And some of the MCOs will pay for certain things and some of them will pay for other things. And so it's just, I think the biggest frustrating thing for the hospital really is the approval that they need to get to bring people inpatient for suicidal occupation and things like that. And they have people that meet all of their criteria that are not getting approved for payment. So there's some serious, so that meeting I think is very helpful because they're going to organize, you know, what their barriers are and what the difficulties are and hopefully to be able to go to the right person to do the best they can.
My understanding is the minutes from the meetings have been shared.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm here to give you the last case management quarterly report. So basically what's on here is just kind of a summary of what we did the last three months there. We transferred out a total of 249 consumers in basically three or four months. So throughout April, we worked on United Healthcare, those folks that had chosen them for Ameri healthcare and went to them. And then in May, we started to visit about our viability as an agency to be able to continue to do the case management. So we worked on, and if we were going to do that, it would have been for the AmeriHealth care attached members. They were the one MCO that was contracting with agencies such as ours to continue to provide those services. So we transferred out the folks that had chosen AmeriGroup, that was somewhere around 79 people. And then kind of hung on to those AmeriHealth folks to make sure if we were able to continue that we would be able to, you know, still be their case manager that they've had for years. So that did not look out for us. And May 17th is about when we decided that that was not going to occur. So then we had six weeks to transfer out 114 people, which proved to be AmeriHealth, the agencies that we worked with, we worked with Pope County. So we gave our consumers a choice of the Pope County agencies. So your Community Support Advocates, Link, Child Serve, Easter Seals. And then also, Department of Human Services has a case management unit out of Marshall County. So we did have about a dozen or so folks go there. And then Boone County didn't want to get a lot of the folks because they didn't have enough staff to be able to take a lot on, but we were able to transfer some to them as well. Those agencies work with us super well to make sure, you know, we got them all the paperwork and the things that they needed to do to be able to pick up and work with people. And though we had a fair amount of people that had discharged days of 6:30, so it kind of went down to the wire, but I think we did okay. And, you know, I haven't gotten a whole lot of phone calls from our consumers or our families or anything. So I think that's a good sign. I think that means that they've figured out, you know, who they need to work with and that they don't need to call us to find that out. So we feel like we did a pretty good job of making sure everybody knew who they were going to. And so that's kind of where we're at. I am resolving billing issues and things like that still right now. It's just I'm probably on the way over. I didn't bill for everything. So we're at least, it's all sent away. We'll see what we get paid for.
And what's our, what's the storage requirements of files and information? You've got to hang on to that for X number of years?
Seven years.
For seven years.
We are full of a lot of stuff.
What's encouraging to me when you mentioned the transfer of people to Pope County and that you're not hearing where there is a major issue. Historically, new people coming into the system, because Pope County being one of the larger counties in the state with the mental health provider network, oftentimes had a long waiting list. And so I was really concerned as to with the new people coming in is whether or not they were going to be able to receive timely service and so forth. So if you've not heard some issues, that's an encouraging sign, but I do think that we need to monitor that a little bit. As you know, and this will probably be addressed at a later time, but Pope County is always asking for additional funding to meet their needs. And, you know, when we had the mental health risk pool dollars, when I was serving in that capacity, you know, we had about $11 million to give to all 99 counties that requested it, but eight million of it went to Pope County. So it just kind of shows the enormity of the population that receives mental health services in that particular area. And yet, at that time, there was a lot of discussion about why they needed those dollars was because of waiting lists and not wanting to serve. So I appreciate all of your effort and all your work and continuing to work with clients. And I don't know if you will at a later time or if we thought about some type of follow-up communication or survey, just so that they, they know locally that we've got, they've got another resource that they could still come to us and see if things are working out. I think that outreach is kind of a comfort level, particularly for a lot of the people that we've served in the past, that if we could stay in touch after a certain period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Veterans Affairs Quarterly Report for Brett and Clint. Brett, I can promise none of these people came through you.
I surely, I surely hope not. Good morning, everybody. The board has a copy of pretty much my whole quarterly report. A couple of things I wanted to add to that. This is my first quarterly with Marty Chitty on the board here as a Board of Supervisor, so wanted to welcome you aboard and the commission's looking forward to working with you as Rick and with Clint there.
Thank you.
Also today, we received $10,000, which is an annual appropriation from the state legislators. It's a million dollar appropriation. Each county gets 10 and the state VA office gets 10. So we received that today and been giving it to Lucy already. And then also wanted to thank the board for appointing a couple of fine commissioners for gender balance now. Jennifer Book came on board July 1 and Amy Rosenberg. Jennifer's a captain in the National Guard and Amy's underneath that. So the kind of our, the idea behind, you know, having five is, and they're, they all live in different communities, is the outreach that we're going to be able to do now. And as well as being gender balanced, that was kind of our two main issues. And Jennifer's going to be a real plus because she works for the federal VA, so she's going to really help, be able to help me out a lot. Going into the quarterly report, this is April through June. Seen three veterans, they came in for rent assistance totaling $1,100. One veteran came in for dental assistance, that was $80. They had a family, a veteran family come in for burial assistance, was $1,841. Total of county assistance was $3,021 for those five veterans. The commission's vision is to ensure that Story County veterans receive timely access to the highest quality benefits and services we can assist with because they have earned them through their sacrifice and service to our nation. And I really feel blessed in being able to be the person for the county that, you know, I get a visit with the veterans. Every day's veterans take a big thank you. And some of these veterans, they come in and I think sometimes I have one shot with them. You know, it's taken them a lot, several years to come to the office. Some are in dire straits, some are just coming in to check on the benefits, that they weren't sure what they earned, even going back to World War, as far as World War II, you know, for the first time. The last quarter, I seen 52 World War II veterans. These are folks that served between 1941 and '46, coming in, some of them for the first time, checking on benefits. Of course, benefits have changed a lot since World War II. A lot of them, they're getting up there in age and they're kind of needing some help with medical and those kind of things. Korea, seen 29 Korea veterans. They served from 50 to 55. And then the biggest group is Vietnam veterans, 73. They served, of course, from '61 to '75. A lot of those men and women are coming in, they're kind of entering retirement age or new retired and those kind of things. So if you've got time on your hands, they can come in and check on the benefits. Persian Gulf, seen 28 that served during Persian Gulf. And of course, that started August 2nd, 1990, and hasn't, it hasn't closed yet, it's still open. Cold War in peacetime, 23. 21 from OIF, OEF, and OND. And let me explain what that means. It's a little confusing. Iraq is OIF. And that's if they served in Iraq from '03 to '10. OEF is Afghanistan, that's if they served 2001 to present. And then OND is if they served in Iraq after August 30th of 2010. Seen 25 surviving spouses. Not every surviving spouse am I able to get benefits for. So I need to visit with a lot of them to figure out who I can get benefits for. So I see a lot of surviving spouses when I do nursing home assisted living visits. So a total of 251 veterans and surviving spouses for the quarter. Did a little bit of outreach. May 10th, had a booth at the Senior Expo that was at the Quality End. Seen 26 veterans there, which was kind of nice because I could tell them about the event we're having the very next day, which was the Veterans Appreciation Day. At Van Schel Park, we seen 62. And it was a rainy day like it is today, so really hoping for a better turnout, but the weather just wasn't helping as much. And then also seen several, once a week or so, I tried to get in nursing homes and assisted living. Actually, I get more than what I can even, than what I can even see. So we ended up rolling back to the next week. Another sheet that I gave the board this morning was kind of, it's based on money that comes into the county through veterans and surviving spouses. When I started in 1999, those benefits was 3.9 million, was going to veterans. And they tell us that that money rolls over seven times. And in 2003, we were able to increase that by about 2.6 million to 6.5 million. 2007, increased it again, 2.7 million to, or by 2.7 million, or 9.2. And then 2011, which really had a big increase there, 16.3 million. And kind of what happened there with age and range, they added three presumptive diagnoses. So that's Parkinson's disease, systemic heart disease, and hericidal leukemia. So that was kind of the big surge there. And then in 2013, we were at 19.4 million. And 2015, which is the latest data that I have, was 21.8 million. So just kind of give the board some numbers there. Why we do federal benefits and why we do outreach, the regular kind of dollars. I hope they spend them in Story County.
Seven times. Didn't you say a whole number of times?
They rolled over seven, yeah.
Brett, we appreciate the work you do. I'm excited about your new commission. I'm glad to hear that it, that you think it's a nice balance of people and we sure appreciate the work you do.
And also Erin reports that we've been doing some training since, well, as you can tell, she's pretty bit, she's been pretty busy. What we've been doing, like some weekly training and getting her kind of speed.
Good. Well, I like the situation you're in now. I like where your office, I like the support that we're able to provide for you and just love the job you do. So thanks, Brett.
All right, yep, thank you.
Yep. Next item is consideration of minutes from July 12.
Move approval, second.
Any additions, corrections, notations? Clinton?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye, minutes passed. Personnel actions as listed, board.
Move approval as listed, second.
Motion in the second. Clinton?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions passed. Consent agenda, no additions.
Move approval, second.
Clinton?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes. No public hearing items today. Additional items, acknowledge receipt of 2016 urban renewal area project applications. Leanne Harper. Morning, Leanne.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today is the opportunity for the board to set the schedule for the urban renewal area plan projects. This is what annually the board supervisors puts out for applications to be submitted by jurisdictions, cities, school districts, for different, called micro grant projects in the past, using the revenue from the wind farms and better equipment, I'm sure, you know. What you have before you on your agenda is, first of all, acknowledging receipt of four applications that were timely submitted and then Cityus Slater did submitted application and passed the deadline. And I'll go through the schedule then on how you may deal with that if you choose to accept that. In addition to that, I did lay out the close schedule for the next couple of months for you to, as a board, consider funding these applications. It will be a little bit different scheduled than the past few years. And first and foremost, I'm trying to acknowledge a very important election coming up, the game is done, so the officer's office is free. There is a, there is a requirement for the officer to be involved in this process, I want to make sure the year is done by October, or shortly thereafter, if you can have it to October. And also, there are seven additional wind turbines. They're under construction in Story County and the board may consider adding those to the properties that are adjourned. And that was required for this amendment because that is part of the code board that says. So the four applications that were received from City Collins, City of Story City, City of Cambridge, and City of Presley. And those applications were with your packet for this morning's consideration. And then the one that did, and all four of those did submit timely applications. Cityus Slater did submit applications as well and has asked the board to consider receiving that. The schedule I have laid out, today is the acknowledgement receipt, setting the schedule. Tomorrow, the notices from consultation meetings with the taxing entities will be sent out. That taxing meeting would be August 2nd, possibly in the afternoon, and that's something I'd like to discuss. In the past, we've always done it before the board's supervisor's meeting with this kind of condensed schedule. I'd like to have the applicants come present to you in the morning of August 2nd and have the taxing entities an opportunity to hear those presentations and then possibly have you on the afternoon afternoon. That's, that's still to be determined, the timeframe.
So repeat that again on the second, would probably be in the morning and afternoon, so they would come at the, whenever.
During your normal board meeting, as well, the applicants would come present. And then the afternoon, we would have the consultation.
And that's usually with you and...
And it'd be all the taxing, the taxing notices would go out too. I did list it because we might be adding properties. Palestine Township and Ballard School District, Bridgefront Grant Township and the Bay School District, Collins Maxwell Baxter School District, City Collins Township, Roland Story School District, City of Story City, City of Cambridge, City of Presley, and then Lafayette County Township.
And that's everywhere that new wind, wind turbine are going.
Right, right.
And then in the past, what we've done, we've also included those that are already tipped. So essentially, every taxing has been, been added to Story County.
So my question would be, would it, I like the idea of allowing the other taxing entity... So my question would be, would it, I like the idea of allowing the other taxing entities to come and hear the presentations if they so choose. Would it be appropriate to just have our consultation meeting almost as part of our morning agenda, just at the end of our morning agenda, where they can come be part of the presentations, hear everything, and then we have an opportunity to kind of debrief with the taxing entities if they choose to come?
It'd be similar to what you've done with the drain and drain stretch.
Where we would just adjourn as board of supervisors, but continue in that consultation meeting.
So following that, August ninth, is, the code Iowa sets up some timeframes that the taxing entities have obtained a provider to comment, have to the board. That would be due on August ninth. And on your agenda that day too, you give some direction to staff as to what possible projects, what projects and possible funding levels we would like to see incorporated into the urban renewal area plan. And based on that, restart the resolution process for public hearings. On August sixteenth is when that would be held, the resolution setting public hearing. And then you would actually take some action with your staff to put them into plan, draft them into plan on the website. The way of step forth to schedule is that date that the City of Slater's request could possibly be considered then by the board supervisors if they so choose. They go to two weeks to look at the applications that were received, the time, meeting the required timeframe.
Is it appropriate at this time to ask or to have you comment? Did you feel there may be some extenuating circumstances as to why they didn't meet the deadline?
The applicant did indicate that the City of Slater experienced some technical difficulties with computers.
So Leanne brought this to me, Wayne, when it came in late, and asked me, as chair, what I felt should happen. And I said, I'd like the board to be able to consider this, but I don't think it's reasonable for the board to consider this in the same way that we're going to consider those applications that came in as they were supposed to. And so that's why it ended up just separated a little bit. I don't intend for them not to make that consideration. I just want to note that it didn't come in when it was supposed to come in, and the other entities did in fact send them in as they were supposed to.
We would still incorporate this as part of the taxing, the states notice consultation meeting, that just as I did for them here at King and Presley and Southern School of Law, and then invite them to the September, sorry, August sixteenth meeting.
So your office wasn't aware of their difficulties until after June July fifth? So they made no mention of the fact that they were posing, or at least contacted you that this could be impediment, that going forward, that they would be having a late
I received it, I received an email from the City of Slater on Friday, July eighth.
That's your first notice that they were wishing to give submission?
Right, and it indicates that they had had on and off computer problems, but really just from the thirtieth to the fifth. And so, for me, and we'll talk more about this when we get to consideration of what they were requesting, this is problematic. I don't think it eliminates our ability to fully consider it, but I would hate for it to get the same weight of consideration to those entities who traditionally and reliably do what we ask.
Thank you.
Just continuing the schedule, really, when we hit September thirteenth and?
Well, I want to talk more about September sixth, because I'm kind of excited about that, because theoretically, it looks to me like you could have Supervisor Marty Chitty respond to something from Nevada School Board President Marty Chitty, and I just want to see how that would work.
I would probably defer to our president. I would ask that. It's an interesting conundrum, but it will be fine.
Then following the week, following the notice from the tax, or the response back to taxing authorities, is when you start public hearings. Again, because if you do consider adding additional properties, there will be three considerations to make. Past few years, it's just been a resolution and a complaint. So that does make it time for an additional three weeks. But the final date to have everything published and finalized would be October sixth.
And I think you're a hundred percent right in trying to get it done a little earlier this year, just noting that the auditor's office is really going to be covered up for ready the month of October, leading to Election Day in early November.
Is there any questions, Brett?
So this is simply acknowledging that we've received these, and I would just add a special note that we're acknowledging receipt of the Slater application, but we are viewing that kind of in its own silo. Do we need a motion to acknowledge, or can we just acknowledge?
I think in the past, you have done that before.
All right.
I would make a motion to acknowledge your report as of today.
So move, second.
Got a motion and second further discussion? Chitty?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It is acknowledged. Thanks, Leanne. Next item is discussion and consideration of Resolution seventeen-oh-five, Bakken Pipeline easement for Heart of Iowa Nature Trail. It has been a, it's been over a year and a half that we've been talking about this. I know our Conservation Department, and I don't know if Mike Cox is here, has done a phenomenal job really considering this and taking a look at what's in Story County's best interest from a conservation's point of view, their best interest. The Conservation Board dealt with this on June twenty-seventh, where they did in fact resolve that the Conservation Board recommends approval of the easement by the Story County Board of Supervisors, and then they laid out some additional requests to the pipeline company. I would just say that board supervisors took those extra requests really, really seriously, and has dug in since June twenty-seventh, trying to get those extra considerations figured out as far as we can. I do have two people that have requested to speak, and then we may have more. And I'm going to start, board, with Chad Carter, who has requested to speak to the board. Chad, thanks for being here today.
Thank you for having me.
Start with your address and your relationship to the pipeline, if any.
Chad Carter, four-two-two-zero East Madison, Des Moines, Iowa. I'm a business agent with the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local Two Thirty-four. We run the heavy equipment, or operate the heavy equipment on this pipeline. I'm asking you guys for your approval to cross the Heart of Iowa Nature Bike Trail in Story County. As of today, we have put roughly two-hundred members and residents of Iowa to work on the Dakota Access. With the approval of the easement, we should be able to put another three-hundred here in the Heart of Iowa. Thank you.
Chad, thank you for coming today. Thanks for speaking to us. And the next request is Brett Nowlinski. Brett and I have had a lot of conversations over the last year and a half, it seems like a whole lot here recently. Brett, thanks for being here today.
And thank you, Honorable Supervisor. I will apologize and ask your indulgence from the beginning. This may be a longer than usual presentation, as?
It's okay.
As you alluded, there's a lot of history here, particularly with Supervisor Chitty coming in in the middle of a long process. I want to cover quite a bit of ground. And certainly, if, may I don't cover, feel free to ask, or if it gets too long, just give me the signal. Let me start out with just a bit of an update, because I know we get asked questions periodically on what's going on in Story County, and how are things? Since the last time I was here, there have been several developments. We now have voluntary easements executed from Iowa State University and all the Iowa State University-related entities. There are four, only four, landowners, private landowners, remaining, and we have not acquired land from the, in Story County. To be clear, so I'm overstate, when I say landowners, I count as one if there is an individual that has a land interest, and they also are managing, for example, a family trust or LLC that also has a land interest. So four landowner groups that have not been acquired.
Brett, how many parcels does that, four groups of individuals represent? Do you know that?
If I remember correctly, it's six.
Six parcels that you don't have voluntary easements with?
And I currently have landlords. So, as you may be aware, the state is divided for construction purposes into spreads. The spread that Story County is part of, construction has begun. So if they aren't across the county line, barring weather like today, that will happen soon, so you will start seeing additional activity in the county. But obviously, what we are here specifically on today is a relatively narrow piece, where we are seeking easement across Heart of Iowa Nature Trail. As supervisors are aware, this is all part of a route that was approved by the Iowa Utilities Board. We do need to have the county as the owner of that land, like any other owners, to provide us with a right across that. We believe there is another alternative, as with other owners, that's eminent domain, but that's a place that I don't think any of us would prefer to go if there's a way around it, and I think that there is. And I think, again, I greatly appreciate the County Conservation Board and their recommendation for approval to voluntary easement.
Yeah, and Brett, I would just say that there is one other option, other than going through eminent domain proceedings, which as you and I have discussed repeatedly, offers some interesting legal questions. The other option is for the pipeline company to simply shift where it intends to cross the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail down to an existing roadway, an existing public roadway, in which case the board supervisors has no authority to issue or not issue any kind of easement. So for me, when I was looking at this, there were kind of multiple walls in the air. It's not as simple as just saying yes or no to one place, there's other options.
Respectfully, from our perspective, at this point with the route approved by the Utilities Board, that route is the option. Our permit is on a very particularly designated path, and we think that, at this point, that that option has been worked out substantially and satisfactory.
And I'm in complete agree with you, Brett. What I'm, the point I'm trying to make is that there are those that believe that Story County ought to use every means at its disposal to basically build a wall, and I know building a wall is a great political catchphrase right now. Building a wall on the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, saying, okay, you shall not cross. And all I'm suggesting is that it's not as simple as that. It's not as simple as Story County saying, you shall not cross. Legally, it may not hold up, but even if you didn't go the legal route, at some point, the pipeline company would have the option of redesigning things, I'm sure at great cost, and crossing without any kind of approval from the board.
I am certainly not going to argue with you about the fact that ultimately, we believe this will improve. It has been permitted by the highest regulatory authority to permit the pipeline, but I'm trying to set aside a lot of those sort of what ifs, because we do have a very particular proposal on the table today. And it's a proposal that has a lot of history. Our staffs started working together probably almost two years ago. And we have made several changes along the way. For the first round, when we got together and met with the county and engineers and executives, the county attorney's office and representatives of supervisors had some requests with regard to some easement language, with regard to some insurance language. Conservation Board Director Cox had some concerns about the technical aspects of the crossing. So we agreed to make those changes in the easement. We also redesigned to go under the trail as opposed to across it. We further agreed to put the boring equipment outside of county, so it's on private easement to either side, so that equipment won't affect the trail at all. We've made some changes in how we move equipment around to preserve the trail. We have agreed to some flagging and some signage to help better inform users of the trail. And I think all of those were good ideas, those are all things that we have been able to work with County Conservation on, and agree to some of those changes. There have been some other changes along the way that were not as visible or significant, but this has been processed. Culminating really, as you mentioned, in CCD meeting in June, and the resolution where they recommended approval subject to some additional fine tuning of the insurance language, which we rarely get worked out. And then several additional recommendations, which at the board meeting, I think it was acknowledged, those are non-binding, that they were requests to us and they were requests through you.
Absolutely.
And the supervisors asked us to make sure that we followed up on those, and I want to assure you that we have. And I want to talk a little bit about those requests. Several of them had to do with assurances that we were going to use best practices for environmental aspects, for safety of the pipeline. And those we absolutely can assure that we, we had made some voluntary agreements at the Utilities Board during the permitting. They go above and beyond what's required by an already extensive set of federal safety rules. We have had to work with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, and we have approval from them for all of the environmental attributes that are under their control in the Utilities Board. And I know that the three of you were present, it was a long, three and a half weeks in Boone, Iowa, but there was expert testimony from opponents, from neutral parties like Consumer Advocate, from Dakota Access, and of course, the board has its own expert safety engineering staff. And there were tables of, you know, here are how we're going to cross various landforms, here is how we're going to cross various waterforms. And those things were extensively hashed out. I just want to give some assurance that these were not sort of rash decisions or a redesign to build it. We had made some additional agreements, the board then imposed some additional requirements yet. I provided a letter, that I'll talk about in a minute, that has as an attachment, a table that we provided with the board's request, comparing some of the voluntary commitments before the board added on to those, as they compare to federal pipeline regulation and show where we were going, above and beyond. And I, the board was ultimately satisfied with that, and I certainly hope that this board is as well. So the easy ones are the general requests from conservation that we keep to their available conservation in mind, and that we do what we can to be good stewards. And I'm pleased to make those assurances. The other category was a request that Dakota Access, they referred to directionally bore, they're actually, that sort of overlaps two different techniques, boring and directional drilling, under all of the water crossings in Story County. And I want to give the assurance that we also took that very seriously. And I think many representatives of the county are aware, you know, we had surveyed the contours of the stream channels and the banks, and we compared those to overhead photography of where the tree lines and tree growths are. And for both practical reasons and advisability reasons, Dakota Access is not willing to agree to bore or drill all those water crossings. I want to make clear that that was not something that we just dismissed out of hand. Let me talk first about the advisability reasons. And unfortunately, we didn't have a lot of opportunity to talk about this with CCD, because I certainly do respect that this is an area of expertise for them. But a lot of our concern is that almost all these crossings are on private property, most of which we already have acquired the land for. Most of them are used for farming purposes. When you do a bore or a drill, I think there's often a misunderstanding that, well, you're going under the surface, so there won't be as much disruption. The problem is that actually getting under the surface and using the equipment to get under the surface has a disruption all its own. And when you get to a certain depth, that disruption becomes extremely significant. So if you take an example of a forty-foot deepest point of a stream bed, and we bore, our commitment, even though this is above and beyond the safety requirements, we committed to the Utilities Board and all the landowners, we'll go sixty inches beneath the water channel. So for a forty-foot bottom point in a bed, it's forty-five feet under, the equipment then has to go about two feet into that, so you're about forty-seven feet down. And to get the equipment into that hole, which is now four and a half stories deep, that hole has to be engineered, right? So for practical reasons and for ocean reasons, you can't have that collapsing. And so you have to have at least? And so you have to have at least a two-to-one slope ratio on each of the walls. So all of a sudden, that 40-foot depth requires a hole that is 135 feet on each side as a square. That is a massive hole, 45 feet deep. You've got to segregate that soil, you've got to put that soil somewhere. You also then have to get the pipe, which is not flexible, lined up in that hole. So you have a narrower strip coming out on the non-water body side that you're also impacting and you're digging a deep hole to get that lined up on a piece of equipment that's 47 feet deep. So the footprint for that sort of activity on our land side is extensive, and we actually think that more environmentally disruptive and detrimental than simply using a traditional surface-based open cut process for most waterways. And again, there were a table of these water crossings at the Utilities Board, people were talking about the pros and cons of different approaches, and part of what was approved in the route was a table of where we would drill or bore, where we wouldn't, and give some of these same explanations, although in much better engineering detail than this lawyer is capable of doing, as part of that hearing. So that's the advisability concern. The practicality concern, and it's unfortunate, although I think the advisability issue would have been the same, that that request from the CCB didn't come up at an earlier stage of working the process. We special ordered the pipe to our specifications. We ordered that about a year ago, and we certainly did order some extra of the thicker wall pipe that can withstand the strains of being pushed and pulled through a bore or drill. But there just simply is not enough of that type of pipe available in a reasonable timeframe to add another linear feet of additional boring that is being talked about, even for a handful of the crossings in Story County. So you've got issues of private property in the negotiations and expectations of farmers that have that. You've got some timeline and some material availability issues that collectively, as we looked at it, is just not a request that we can agree to apply with. Having said that, we certainly understand where the Conservation Board is coming from. And I have to switch from my, let's have a lovely conversation, to my lawyer here for just a second, and sort of reserve some rights here. I want to make very clear as I'm saying this, part of why those were requests, and only requests, is given the issue in front of the board is actually a very specific, narrow issue. And legally, we certainly would not concede that there is any authority to tie these unrelated elements to this specific, you know, easement process. Having said that, let me go back to the happier part of the topic. We looked at it and said, what can we do? Normally, our easements are 125 to 150 feet over open land for temporary construction only. Once construction is done, the permanent pipeline easement is 50 feet. What we have already done all along the route is when we go through forested areas, we throttle that easement width down to 85 feet for the temporary construction. We still need the 50 as permanent easement for the pipeline. But what that switch from 150 or 125 down to 85 does is it preserves, obviously, about 50% more trees going through. The trade-off, from our perspective for that, is what that extra construction space is for is soil segregation. Obviously, that's a concern of the Conservation Board, too. It's a huge concern of the farming community. It was a, really, quite possibly the largest issue in the Utilities Board, was for ag land, how we make sure we handle the protection and restoration. So one thing we have to do when we narrow that down is we can't do the segregation piles at that location anymore. So now they have to be trucked out of the forest and back out to the nearest open area where we try and get a little additional land on top of our usual easements, bring that out, segregate it. So we will still very carefully segregate those soils and follow all the proper routines for that, but there is an additional cost and difficulty on our part to foregoing the wider clear. The absolute minimum we can have cleared over the pipeline for aerial safety inspections that I am making for access for routine maintenance and things is 30 feet. Normally, we do that only in wetland areas, not in agricultural areas. By a letter that we sent to the county last night, and based on some discussions that we have had with various representatives of the county, we are willing to commit that if we get this easement, that we will address as best we can those forested water crossing areas by agreeing to go down to only 30 feet maintained clear. We still would need 50-feet legal easement in the event something unforeseen would come up, but we will keep clear at only 30 feet of that, which adds, again, another 40% that is allowed to revegetate, to regrow in forest when we're in. The other thing that we decided would be appropriate, often when there are situations like this, where there is an ecological impact that is inevitable, right, you're putting a new piece of infrastructure, that there is some sort of compensatory action, right? So if anyone is familiar, for example, with wetland reserve program, federal WRP program, if an electric transmission line, for example, takes a WRP, they have to provide a land spot, right? They have to find and acquire suitable land that gets put in the program instead. Similarly, I don't know what the county does, but a lot of cities, when you do greenfield subdivision development, subdivision developers have a dedication requirement, it's a dedicated park space. And if they often, if it's not practical to do it there, they can, for example, for the nearby city park that's going to be used by that subdivision, they can pay for improvements, right, in lieu of their dedication. We've had to do that with Fish and Wildlife Service, whereas we went through FWS areas, we had to provide a compensatory amount into a conservation fund or the Fish and Wildlife Service's other goals. And so, based on those models, it seemed appropriate that if we couldn't give precisely what was being asked, that in the interest of being a good citizen and a good steward and working with the conservation effort, that we are willing to make a commitment to do something in lieu of exactly what the County Conservation Board wanted for the water crossing. So the other thing you'll find in the letter that we entirely first was in the letter, is we will commit that within 30 days of having all of the necessary permits from the county, that we will provide a compensatory payment to the county for conservation purposes. Our understanding, and I think this is great because it actually ties to the real issue here, which is the trail, one of the, the only bullet point I didn't mention in the CCB's resolution was, we want to be able to pave, and we want your assurance to be paved. You know, we want to work with you on any work you're doing directly over the pipeline for everybody's safety and benefit, but absolutely, we understand that your interest would be to pave that, we have no intention to interfere with that. Our understanding is that there is a priority section that is about four miles, that's indirect information from Conservation Director Cox. We are willing to make a commitment to fund the paving of that four-mile priority segment up to a contribution of $1.6 million. And obviously, we calculate that on the basis of that paving project, but there are no earmarks that the county ultimately could use that over allowance. We understand that, but our hope is that, because it's meant to be sort of in lieu of a conservation activity, that it goes to a similar purpose, something within the availability of the conservation effort. So that's a thumbnail sketch of the long history of this. It's our concerns with doing anything other than passing the easement. And you talked about the fact that it might involve some legal action. We certainly hope not, but I don't think we would have much choice left if after two years of working on this, we can't get to the S on it. We have made what we think are responsible changes throughout the process, and so this last round of commitments to try and address it the best as possible, even though frankly, the CCB had already recommended without these commitments that you approve the easement. And those commitments are reaffirmations specifically to this county, that we will use best practices in our own conservation stewardship, that we will narrow to the absolute minimum our crossing through the trees, and that we will make this dedication to another conservation priority in lieu of doing exactly what the CCB requested on the crossing. And frankly, one advantage of that, most of these crossings, and I understand the public service benefits from, you know, from the forested areas there, but in terms of actual short-term enjoyment of those, almost all of those are on private property. So doing a project in lieu of those that involves the bike trail is something that is much more publicly available, publicly enjoyable in exchange for that. Obviously, we think that the infrastructure has benefits, the utilities we've worked on it has benefits, including the Story County. We know there are those who take a different view and see this as a burden on the county. And we certainly hope that providing a public benefit and gives this board some tolerance and we take seriously those concerns and we're trying to be a good citizen. With that, if there are no questions, we certainly appreciate the work of this board, of your attorney staff, of the County Conservation Board, with whom we've all been able to work very well for the last two years. Hopefully, we are now in the final stretch, and I would appreciate the passage of the easement for the CCB's recommendation.
Well, Brett, thank you very much for coming and giving that presentation. It has been a fascinating, sometimes trying process. I know I've learned more about the difference between boring and drilling and digging than I ever thought I would. I have appreciated, I know that you and I have not always seen eye to eye on what was happening and where we're going, but I've appreciated knowing that you were working as hard as you could to get where you could go as a representative of the pipeline company. Hopefully, you know that I was doing exactly the same in my role as Chair of Board of Supervisors. I want to just reiterate, this board, with me as the chair and the representative in this case, took not only the recommendation that we passed the resolution from our Conservation Board very seriously, we also took their additional request, and they were requests, very seriously. And I appreciate that you guys were able to agree to all but one of those, and further appreciate that we tried to find some kind of common ground of how we would address the one that you guys didn't feel like you could get to, how that could still benefit the people of Story County. So thank you very much. I mean, it's been a hard slog to get to this point, but I appreciate the work you put in. Questions for Brett?
Not really a question, but more of a comment, and I would be remiss if I didn't certainly thank you, Rick, for your role in taking the request that was presented from the Conservation Board, from the benefit of some of the other members of the Arctic and so forth. You know, I served on the Conservation Board for, since 2004, and just recently, the last few years, became a non-voting member and so forth. And to understand the thoroughness by which the Conservation Board takes not only the heart of Iowa Nature Trail serious, they take all land acquisition and areas of environmentally sensitive areas in Story County as a high priority. And I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the outstanding work of Mike Cox, our director, not only in working with the board, but also working with the pipeline through this area and specifically through the heart of Iowa Nature Trail. I think the county attorney's staff and your efforts has brought us to a clearer understanding of the challenges that the pipeline faced, as well as our concern for environmental protection and safeguards to the best of our ability as this project potentially moves forward. And those things, in my opinion, would not happen had you not taken the lead to represent us and continuing to work in that regard. And also, I reached out to Director Cox, sharing with him some of the proposals that you had referenced in your letter to us that we received, acknowledging the additional things. And my concern primarily there was to make sure that the Conservation Board and its board directors had an opportunity, if they had some concerns or some questions, we would hear about it prior to having to make a decision today. And again, I want to thank Mike for sending an email out to the best of his ability, kind of highlighting that, since he wasn't privy to the final discussions and so forth. But at the end of the day, I think what's important for the public to understand is that this was a long collaborative process. Each group had special interests, special concerns. We also need to acknowledge the strong concerns of our community, our citizens, the environmental concerns that have been lodged throughout this process. You know, having people committed towards environmentally sensitive safeguards is what makes our county and this country a better place for our life. We may not always agree on the final decision, but we should always be respectable and willing to hear all sides of a given issue and then try to work for the common good to the best of our ability. So there's a lot of thank yous that I think this board certainly wants to acknowledge, and I think that this process in itself has certainly helped me be a lot more comfortable than as we move forward. So thank you.
Marty, any questions?
I would share with some observations, but I come at it from the ground up, not from the top down. I appreciate the opportunities to meet individually with you as my board, fellow board members. I thank Mike Cox, who in no small way has been bringing me up to speed as my short time here on the board. I have seen this issue as just something that you would read in the paper or watch on television. Now I'm here in the decision-making process, and it has been kind of a, I've been whipsawed by that which is in motion here. No small thanks to the attorney's office, who has been at our side, answering our questions to the best of their abilities and giving direction in how things work out against each other. I understand the dynamic in place with the utility boards rendering up a decision, that the county is kind of constrained of the touches of the complex projects project. I think that we are in a position right now with the mitigating offer on the paving of the trail is noteworthy and appreciated. We are in a position that we have taken into account, the boards, the Conservation Boards once wishes, and we have seen to the best of our abilities to be impactful, go to a place that I think we have time to make a resolution and an offer up of hope.
Yeah, I think we're to the point of consideration, but...
Just before we do so, I just want to certainly give Director Cox an opportunity. I know he didn't sign up to say anything. He doesn't need to say anything, but I would certainly like to at least extend that.
I was going to open it up broader than Mike Cox before we consider this, and of course, Mike, you're always welcome. Your work on this has been unbelievable. But I want to open it up to anybody. If there's anybody else who would like to speak to us before we consider, yeah, Linda. I kind of had a suspicion, Linda, that you might want to say something. Brett, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's the first time I've...
Remember this one.
Can I record that for my kids? Because I have...
Thank you.
Hi, Linda. Shortbread, thank you.
My name is Linda Merkin, and I'm speaking today as a private citizen. I think I have some questions for the supervisors to see what you heard just now from Mr. Glensky. I heard an offer that Dakota Access would fund $1.6 million to pay four miles of the trail. Did you hear that that was contingent upon the board approving this easement request, or that would be given to Story County regardless of what the board did? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I can tell you exactly what I heard, because it's in the letter.
No, I didn't have a chance to.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, yeah, we just received it. Dakota Access believes it's appropriate to make a contribution in mitigation of any conservation impacts it may make in Story County. While it cannot accommodate the CCB request, Conservation Board, request to modify its construction techniques to preserve all trees on... construction techniques to preserve all trees on private lands, in addition to minimizing its footprint in forest areas, Dakota Access will also donate and provide a public benefit that is relevant to the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail. Since it is the actual matter before the supervisors, specifically, Dakota Access will, no later than 30 days after obtaining the fully executed Heart of Iowa Nature Trail easement and all of Story County flood plant permits, make a contribution of $1.6 million to cover that.
So, the donation is contingent upon the board approving the agreement?
I'm viewing, I'm viewing it as consideration for crossing our Heart of Iowa Nature Trail and recognizing that we want to improve our Heart of Iowa Nature Trail.
Okay.
That's what I heard.
Okay. Thank you for reading it. I know what I heard.
Yep.
Second, these waterways may be bordered by private property, but my understanding is that several of them would be considered an applicable waterway. And I don't know if that is being looked into in terms of what Dakota Access can do blocking an applicable waterway.
In either case, it would reside with the Board of Supervisors. Right, if it's an applicable waterway and you're making that case, then it, then it would reside either with the Corps of Engineers or somebody at FEMA or somebody at the federal level.
Okay.
Yep.
I think they are an applicable waterways. Okay, third is, I did hear that Dakota Access would pursue legal action against the county if you did not approve this permit. Correct?
I think that, I believe that Dakota Access has maintained all the way through that it is their intent to build a pipeline and if that means going to, using the legal process to build the pipeline, that's exactly what I think you could expect.
Those were just three questions I wanted to clarify. Thank you very much.
Did you, yeah, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to address the board? I see Mike up. Mike, it's been a hard process, man. You've done a nice job.
Well, good morning and thank you. Thank you to, to the Access Pipeline staff and representatives for, for working with us. You know, you're absolutely right. This is one of those issues that, you know, when it first came up, the conservation boards have, you know, we got our intent pointed in this direction and in concern, you know, the conservation board is very serious about its role as being an advocate for environmental resources in the county, our own natural resources. Water quality is just one of the many that we're concerned about, soil quality, soil health, et cetera, not to mention our own properties and managing those properties the best we can and those recreational resources the best we can. So, you know, commend the conservation board on taking those charges very seriously and doing what they can to implement or to try to facilitate proper stewardship of our resources in the county. So, I think that they, you know, they know their role and I think that they took that action through the resolution that they could take to the best implement or facilitate what they can in regards to our resources. You know, water quality, as you're well aware, is one of the primary concerns of our state right now and something that, something we take very seriously. So, to the extent that we can implement or try to encourage Pipeline to be very cognizant of the impacts of that project on potential water quality concerns and environmental concerns, you know, that's what the conservation board wanted to accomplish. So, they made those recommendations via a resolution to the board, also considering, of course, the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, recreational capacity there and the fact that many of our remnant, or I should say native vegetation or native prairies are along those old railroads. That, that land hasn't been disturbed and so, and most of it can be, we see a good percentage of our remnant areas, that's where they're located along those. And so, we, you know, we're particularly concerned about that. And so, we applaud the efforts of the Pipeline to bore under the trail in that location. Certainly appreciate that. I guess we really appreciate then the board supervisors hearing those concerns and taking those concerns to heart and doing, just as the conservation board, you know, has certain authorities and certain parameters which it can act on, appreciate that the board supervisors would also fully utilize those, those abilities in bringing, bringing this kind of difficult situation to a resolve. We all know that there's opponents and proponents and at the end of the day, we're going to say, you know, we did what we, we did the best thing we could for, for the county and in specific here to our resources. So, having said that, I just appreciate the board taking it, board supervisors here taking this seriously.
Yeah, and we did, and, and, you know, you got to see firsthand how seriously we took it. I said at the conservation board meeting, so I attended the conservation board meeting on, on the 27th, and I said then, and I want to say now, I believe that our conservation board and our conservation director as the representative of that board handled this situation exactly like you guys are supposed to. You are in charge of conservation in Story County. I think the questions you raised, the concerns that you guys had and continue to have are very real and proper. And, you know, it's been a really nice conversation between Brett and I today, but I think it's fair to say that Brett doesn't necessarily view Story County or Story County as conservation is easy to work with. I mean, we're, we're a pain in the butt, there's no question about it, and, and we have been on multiple occasions. I'm, I'm greatly appreciative that you've been willing to work with us to try to figure these things out. But Mike, I just want to underscore, you and your board have done exactly what you're supposed to do to get here. You've raised the exact right concerns. Hopefully, the board supervisors have done the same thing. We have a little different role than, than conservation does in all of this. And so, I just want to thank you for your work in, in really trying hard to protect Story County from a conservation point of view. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the board? Do you want to come up? Sure.
I have a question and I think this probably is incorrect. Did you have an opportunity to talk to State Holmes about possible litigation if they...
Yes.
Okay. And was there any estimation of cost or position that you could share with us that wouldn't be confidential? Because I know that that's an attorney-client privilege.
I'm going to say no, and I'll check into it and see what, if anything, from that conversation is appropriate to share. Is that fair?
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else wishing to address the board? Okay, seeing no one else board, it's to us.
I would move Resolution 1705 to approve the Pipeline easement for the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail with the acknowledgement of the, the letter conditional, what do we call it? Commitment of the acknowledgement of the commitment letter from Pipeline that was presented by Brett today.
I would second that.
Motion in the second, further discussion.
No, again, I just think this has truly been an educational opportunity to fully understand the complexity of something of this nature and when you realize that the final decisions and so forth rests with a different body. And I think it's important that citizens understand, and maybe that's why in government, certain kinds of things are done by a special commission or boards, because oftentimes supervisors are directly connected to the people and will receive a great deal of communication pro and con on a lot of the decisions that come before us, whether we have any authority or not any authority. But I think that because the nature of government is to give regulatory authority to special commissions, it has probably alleviated the, in my opinion, the concern that sometimes interested groups or, or small factions of people with strong concerns could sway the ultimate decision of elected bodies and elected boards. And so, if you look at whether we're talking federal regulations or state regulations, you know, this is true, and I was going to report a little bit later, one of the ongoing issues today has to do with the EPA at the federal level and its outreach and regulations. And so, there's always going to be advocacy groups out there that are concerned about entities that are established to determine how things are going to basically happen. And I believe that that's a good process. So, but from our standpoint, I think it was important for me personally and as any board, and I hope that this is true of all my supervisors from around the state where they've had a chance to work with the Pipeline, is that they really try to look at this in terms of what their role and responsibilities were and yet allow for the public to be able to share its concern and its views and then give the utility board all of the information that it had received and allowing them to arrive at whatever decision they were going to make. So, for me personally, I think that the process, while the outcome may not be exactly what some people like, it was structured in such a way that the authority oftentimes is taken away from the local level and put in the hands of an agency that is designed to handle these kinds of things. And I think people need to understand the dynamics of how these things happen.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, Wayne. Anything further?
I would have to say, just as a reasonably private citizen, that as a term of decision-making process, be it great or small, I'd say this is a great one, that you get left with the impression as you come in that you, if you're a supervisor of Story County, you have the ability to be impactful and have run rough determinations, what happens in Story County. And I think Wayne alluded to it pretty well, that we do not always have that case that the things are handed down, so this is one of those decisions. I think we have done a, the ultimate work, a nuance in, in a position that we hope had the county better in a tangible way going forward. We, I understand and I accept the concerns of the people that may not necessarily see that this is a good thing going forward, but once again, from this chair, from this board, you do not have a choice to stop this. And so, I turn it back to the chair.
All right. Ready to vote. Clinton?
Aye.
Chitty?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Resolution 1705 passes. Thank you very much. Let's see, no agency reports, no other reports. Public forum number two, this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not on state's agenda. Board may not take any action due to privacy, hoping to be involved, but we may do so in the future. Anybody wishing to address us on any topic? Seeing no one, moving to the microphone. Liaison assignments, Wayne, anything?
Not only liaison, no.
Marty, anything?
Very informative and constructive meeting with Keith and Melissa Downey in the Parks and Management yesterday, and look forward to moving to that committee assignment and if they have some actionable things they wish to do in the county here going forward, who will be participating in.
Outstanding. Good. Announcements, Wayne?
Before we get to your announcement, just a committee update. You remember I mentioned last board meeting that I would be going to the seat committee, which was the, it's an agency set up by the Secretary of State dealing with the election administration training. It was a very interesting meeting. What's, what's unusual in this meeting is that the Secretary of State actually sits on this board as a voting member.
And has a staff.
And has two staff members. There are seven members on this board and we got into some interesting discussions regarding the 2080 agreement, the voting membership, and at the end of the day, no definite decisions were made, but just so that you are aware, the Secretary of State did bring a proposal to the board to maybe look at equalizing the voter representation. Out of the seven members, it appears that the counties have a majority. There are four representatives of county, which means that the ISACA board is made up of county auditors from the various counties and myself, who is appointed by the Iowa State Association of Counties Board of Directors. And so, one of the proposals would be is to eliminate one of those positions as a voting member, which in this case would be the ISAC Board of Directors representative. And they give a three, a six-member voting board. I raised some questions about what happens in the case of a tie and they assured me that it took a quarter, two votes for anything to pass, which would usually be quarterly or every couple of months. So, again, there would be a delay in finalizing any action if it was a six-person board. Then the question came to the 2080. Currently, the Iowa State Association Counties Board of Directors is a part of the 2080, ISACA, the Iowa State Association of County Auditors and the Secretary of State's office. So, my concern was, as representing the Iowa State Association of Counties Board, is that if you want to remove that body as a voting member, then why should they be a member of the 2080? Because they don't have a voice. And so, that was an interesting discussion to take place. What is going to happen, and there will be further discussions, and talking to Bill Peterson, our executive director, he believes that if the Auditors Association, which goes under the acronym of ISACA, brings forth a recommendation that ISAC board becomes a non-voting member, like a liaison to the board, then they would take it under consideration. But I, I, I think that there was at least enough discussion around the table to make this a worthwhile process. I was informed by Lucy Martin at the auditors meeting last week, this topic did not come up, nor did it come up by the executive board. So, I think there's probably a lot of things that they want to think about and talk about, but at some point, we may hear that the current 2080 agreement is going to end in September of this year. So, if they make no, if there's no decision made, then they're either going to recommend a one-year extension to try to resolve this with the three members still being present in the 2080, or it will be a decision made to perhaps remove ISAC Board of Directors and then just have those two entities there. But at no time was this a mandate from the Secretary of State, it was just a preference. He just felt that by moving in this direction, it put the Secretary of State's office and the auditors on an equal footing rather than the counties having majority membership.
Good. No, keep Brown going with announcements if you've got anything.
Announcements? I will be missing a board meeting next Tuesday. I will be attending the National Association of Counties Annual Meeting in Long Beach, California. On Saturday and Sunday, I will also be serving on the NACO's Environmental Energy and Land Use Steering Committee. Again, we still have some major challenges with the EPA and its overreach and several of the other areas, along with, I think I got a 90-page document and I decided not to download it all yesterday, that we will be considering several resolutions and options as we move forward, understanding that it's the annual conferences that actually approves what was voted on at the legislative conference, and that will be our charge then to take that to Capitol Hill and lobby over the next year for certain rules and regulations that are going to be passed. There is, Johnson County has a supervisor also that serves on that board, so we do have at least two members from Iowa. We did have three, but... on that board, so we do have at least two members from Iowa. We did have three, but one from Humboldt County is no longer there that serve on the NACO board.
Well, we appreciate your representing, representing us at those meetings, Wayne. Any announcements, Marty? Just proof that nothing is ever easy. We had an automobile strike, the Community Life Building, this morning at about 1:00 a.m., and apparent drunk driver who didn't think that was enough, thought they would also be texting, and, and so, did some damage to the Community Life Building, which those of you that are following know, we're right at the end of, of having that sold. So, nothing's ever easy. If there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Detective?
Oh, it's fair to say aye. Aye, we are. Thank you.